I call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of September 21st, 2021 to order. Court, please follow along.
Chair O'Malley.
Present.
Mayo?
Here.
Vada?
Here.
Mr. Cornell?
Yeah.
Here.
If we have a quorum, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, and just as one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we begin, I would just like to acknowledge Gracia Maynard, who is a former teacher in our school system. She taught at both Bushy and Kendall Dean Schools. She passed away on Friday at the age of 99, and I just hope we can keep her family and her memory in our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, just unless there's an objection, I'm gonna move the agenda around a little bit. So the first item on the agenda, I'd like to go into a discussion vote or other action letter to the school committee regarding anti-defamation comments. Ms. Welch?
Good evening. This letter is sent collectively from a group of faculty members from the high school, whose names I'll read at the end. It was sent to the school committee members as well as to the Anti-Defamation League in New York. Chairman McGarty, Vice Chairwoman Mayo, Secretary Vada, Mr. Cornell, and Mr. Jones, we are writing to you about a statement that was made by a parent at the last school committee meeting. This letter serves as both a condemnation of not only the statement made at the August 17th, 2021 North Smithfield School Committee meeting, but the lack of response to the statement. At one hour, eight minutes, and 40 seconds into the meeting, a parent stated, "I just want you to know that the Jews got on the bus willingly." Due to the absence of denunciation from the committee, this incident was reported to the Anti-Defamation League, whose mission is to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment for all. The case number with the ADL involving this incident is 00070916. Upon reporting the incident, the ADL viewed the video on the August 17th meeting, and they responded. And this is their response. "ADL is deeply concerned with statements made at a North Smithfield School Committee meeting on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, invoking the Holocaust and, in this situation, blaming the victims of the Holocaust to oppose mask mandates. The absence of any criticism or concern over the use of that misguided analogy is all the more troubling. The comparison of mask mandates in schools to the events of the Holocaust is deeply offensive and inappropriate and trivializes and delegitimizes the memory of victims and stories of survivors. Holocaust comparisons work to desensitize people to the actual events of the Holocaust and move people to focus on sensationalized and inaccurate analogies such as this one. Instead of focusing on the actual issues being discussed, we oppose the offensive and unacceptable Holocaust comparisons that have been weaponized in conversations about vaccines and masks across the nation." That's the end of the ADL statement, and the letter continues from the faculty. "As educators in the North Smithfield School Department, it is, at the very least, both offensive and astonishing that this statement was made. Without any response whatsoever, our students are taught to participate in debate with respect decorum, civility, and decency. Using the victims of the Holocaust to make a point unrelated to the topic being discussed would not be tolerated in a North Smithfield classroom and should not be met by the silence of the members of the committee. Public discourse lends itself to disagreement, but the egregious appalling statement had no connection to the discussion being held. Hopefully, that will be the last time such a disgraceful statement will be made at a meeting. If that is not the case, please consider immediately condemning such heinous and disparate statements in the future." And I just want to read the people that sign us besides myself. Justin Arman, Lindsay Arman, Jessica Camara, Karen Bowden, Kimberly Rawson, Mark Hickox, Bronwyn Morrissey Valeros, Heidi Martel, Jessica Di Filippo, Hannah Savoli, Julie Durant, Jessica Tuttle, Melissa Rouse, Thomas Yaw, Natalie O'Brien, Lita Matroni, Tracy Bailey Gates, Sean Bailey Gates, Melanie Geetz, Lisa Carden, Rita Vieira, Lauren Nelson, Linda Milner, Jessica Cosentino, Tracy Nangle, and Maria Cosini. I appreciate you listening to the letter.
Thank you. Did you want to comment? Yeah, please.
If I may, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Welch. I thought about actually putting together a formal statement, and this is so important to me that I thought it would be better for me just to speak from my heart. You know, we tell kids, when you see something, say something, and we didn't. I can't, I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'm speaking for me, and I apologize from the bottom of my heart. I condemn the statement, I should have said something at the time. It caught me a little bit of deer in the headlights at that moment, doesn't make it right, and it doesn't make it right that I didn't follow up, and I had to wait for teachers from a high school to do that. I will tell you on my watch, I will not let that happen again, and I just want to thank you and the other 26 teachers that called us out on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also would like to say something. Comparing what is happening now with mask mandates and vaccinations to the horrors and tragedies of the Holocaust, even including both in the same sentence or the same thought, is despicable and offensive because there is no comparison. It just trivializes the Holocaust, and that is totally unacceptable. It speaks, I think, to the lack of education about one of the most horrific events in the world's history. And I apologize for not reacting in the moment at the comment. The teachers were right to call us out, and as I said to them in the letter, they did what they do best. They taught us a lesson about our responsibilities, and shame on us for our silence.
So, Ms. Welch and I actually had the chance to talk the night that the letter first came to us as a school committee, and I am appreciative of the letter, I think it was well taken. And, you know, like with Ms. Vada and Ms. Mayo, just to speak from my heart, I think it should be very clear to everyone that that, I don't even know if I can call it a sentiment, but what that parent said is not reflective of what the wider community feels. And, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to gauge sometimes from a Zoom call what the reaction of the wider room is, and although no, none of us stood up and said, "That's wrong, stop it, sit down, and maybe we should have", I just want you to know that the reaction of the wider room was that of outrage and disgust with that person that said, and it did make them back off. Not an excuse, that's not an excuse. And certainly, it helps us to have that kind of perspective from not just one teacher, two teachers, with so many teachers, teachers who teach civics, teachers who teach our children to stand up and say what they know to be right. So, I appreciate you, I appreciate the other teachers, and, you know, thank you for coming here. Me and you.
Well, thank you to the committee for listening, and like I said, it was collective from the people who signed it, but we appreciate it.
I have made my comment.
That's okay, if you want to sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. So, during the public hearing, I heard the statement, I hit the gavel, and asked the person to move on, and they did. I received a letter from Mrs. Welch and others, who was very saddened that we disappointed her and others in the community. We tried very hard to bring the community together and build relationships. The public hearing is a complex and very difficult to control. The statement, the statement was not supported or condoned by me or the school committee. Thank you. There anything else?
I'm gonna, during, unless I hear an objection, I'd like to move the superintendent's report up next, and then I will, we will take a short public comment section. That's, yeah. Superintendent?
Thank you. So, I believe the reason that the chair asked me to move my school opening report forward is because we will, we do have some folks here in the audience that are here with some questions regarding school opening, regarding quarantines, regarding busing, regarding distance learning, and we felt that maybe I should address this at this point so that when we move into public comment, hopefully, I would have answered some of the questions or concerns, or during the public comment, you can raise some others that we can look at and for consideration. So, funny thing happened on the way to opening school. Everything was set up for full in-person, we weren't going to be doing distance learning. We were going to have everybody in the classroom learning, being with their friends, participating in all the extracurricular activities that we offer and the athletics, and then our numbers started changing as far as COVID. So, where we stand right now, and believe me, this is not a North Smithfield thing, across the state, we have as many pediatric COVID cases after three weeks of school opening, for some districts, two weeks, one district, I think, a week and a half, as we were going into Thanksgiving of last year. So, across the state, the numbers have climbed. Now, that caught us by surprise. We did not expect the level of spread that we have right now, nor did we expect the level of quarantines that have had to happen. We were very excited that the Department of Health had dialed back on the classroom quarantine rules. So, just to refresh your memory, first of all, if a student is vaccinated and they're a close contact, they don't have to quarantine, then test. If the students are within three feet and both students, the positive student plus the close contact was wearing a mask, beyond that three feet radius, students don't have to quarantine. So, like last year, for example, we often had to close down a classroom because of a positive case or two. This year, we thought, great, we can isolate. Something went wrong in the sense of, and I will be expressing some frustration going forward. The quarantine rules on the bus do not match the quarantine rules in the classroom. The majority of our students who are close contact and are asked to go home to quarantine, to test, negative PCR test in order to return, are from the bus. Now, the bus rules are, and again, this is without exception, I'm a student, I'm COVID positive, the student sitting next to me must quarantine, these are close contact. The student, two seats, one, two seats in front, one, two seats in the back behind me, plus five rows of seats across the aisle have to quarantine. That is a large piece of the bus that now has to quarantine. So, we have had multiple meetings with the Department of Health, with the Department of Education, to plead with them to relook at the bus quarantine rules because myself, the other superintendents across the state, feel that they are too extreme. We are trying to keep kids in school, not quarantining math swaths of students on the bus with the windows open, with the masks on. Massachusetts doesn't have the same rules as Rhode Island, and we pointed this out to the Department of Health. We also, today, there was a meeting with the superintendents across the state with the Department of Ed to start trying to change some of the DOH rules around quarantining by also providing data, real-world experience, that we are, we have right now, that they may have, you know, really good models, very good plans, very conservative guidance, but it doesn't ne, doesn't necessarily match the reality. So, in talking with the other districts and gathering this information, we're not getting a spread of COVID from the bus. But, because of the rules, we have to quarantine a lot of students, and we're trying to change that. All the districts are providing data to the Department of Health to basically break down how many students we quarantined on the bus versus how many actually had COVID, so that we can push to get the bus rules changed. What I would recommend is if you are afraid that your child may have to be quarantined because of where he or she sits on the bus, and you have the ability not to transport your student to school, don't ride the bus. Until we get these rules changed, you know, we will have to capture more students under the current rules. Now, one of the things that becomes a concern is that now if we have more parents driving students to school or picking them up in order to avoid the bus until the rules get changed, is the traffic at the schools. So, to start with, and announcing it tonight, we're going to be hiring, starting at NSCS, some crossing guards. Not the crossing guards that are standing in the road and stopping traffic to let kids cross the road, but some crossing guards at NSCS to help with traffic, to help, you know, escort students from their cars and to make the process quicker and easier. If anybody wants to be a crossing guard, we're going to be posting, we're looking for a half hour in the morning, a half hour in the afternoon, you know, during pickup and drop-off, and the rate of pay, and this is the going rate for crossing guards, is $15 for a half an hour. Alright, so $30 a day, or if you can just do morning, just do afternoon, we're going to be posting for that. So, we're looking at making the drop-off and the pickup quicker, more efficient. We're pushing with the Department of Health to change the bus quarantine rules so that we do not have to quarantine as many students. Now, quarantines within the schools. In a moment, I'll bring up some numbers, and, oh, let me go back to the buses for a second. Actually, I'm gonna share this on the screen so everybody can see some numbers here. I think it's this one. I apologize, I should have kept this up a little bit differently. I want to share. So, you know, we've been looking at the ridership on the buses as well, because, again, with the rules being what they are, the radius around a positive case and how many kids we have to quarantine, the question is, how many kids do we have riding the bus? You know, what is that radius, how many students are affected? So, we have a listing of, you know, all of our buses, middle school, high school, AFP, elementary, AMPM. This is the count of the buses for just this week, every day. Now, we have seven 77-seat buses, right? So, our most populous routes have the biggest bus. That breaks down to, if we have just two students per seat, that's 52 students, alright? 52 students on the bus, we can fit approximately two students per seat. We do have six 71-seat buses, and that's approximately 46 students, two students per seat. And so, on the different bus routes, you can see, you know, we're within that one to two student per seat on the bus. However, bus number five, hello, bus number five, that is a big route right now. We have a big bus, and we're approaching, you know, we're getting, we're still within two students per seat, but it's getting tighter. Scrolling further down, and most of the other buses are, you know, well within tolerance, bus number 11, especially on Friday, and I think maybe a practice was canceled, and we had 63 students on that bus. So, now we have a handful of seats that have three students in it. I'm very comfortable with that, you know, I want to keep it to be two students or one student, especially with the quarantine rules being what they are. So, we will be looking at and adjusting some of these routes to sort of rebalance some of the loads on the buses. We are pushing the Department of Health to change the quarantine rules on a bus. We don't want bus ridership necessarily to be a thing that keeps a student at home. Alright, let me stop sharing the screen. Actually, I'm gonna take a look at our cases right now. So, since the start of school, NSCS has had 14 positive students. 14 in total, there's a couple of staff members mixed into that. The middle school, two positive, fantastic. Now, it's not fantastic for the two, but I'm talking, you know, in general terms. The high school has had three positive since the beginning of school. Now, right now, for the number of students who had to be sent home, and again, the majority of these students are from the bus, we have 24 students at NSCS waiting for a PCR before they can return. We have 16 at the middle school and at the, I'm sorry, this is not the bus, these are kids that came to the nurse's office sick. They were sent home, they're waiting for a PCR in order to return, and we have four students at the high school. And to the nurse, don't feel well. Go home, take a PCR, and, you know, then you can return if it's negative. Now, going to the nurse with a symptom to be sent home, this is, again, for this year, some of the rules have changed. Last year, with COVID classic, not the Delta variant, it was two symptoms they looked for. This year, all the guidance is around one of the symptoms of COVID. You should go home, you should be tested, you may have it. Now, this is where some of the confusion begins, because one of the symptoms could be a headache. Right? I have headaches every single day, right? But I'm not necessarily going home to be, to have a PCR test, right? I have had a postnasal drip since last September. I have a stuffy nose all the time. That doesn't necessarily mean I have COVID and I have to go home and isolate and test. So, one of the things that the nurses will be asking for, if your child has this sort of ongoing condition. I talked to a parent, their, 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 their child had, since the age of two, at least once a week, a headache. Been to the doctors, don't know what it is, but there's a headache, it comes on at least once a week, it's the same type of headache. Does that mean that that child has to, once a week, stay home, isolate, and get a PCR test? No, because if a physician can just produce something and say, yep, this kid has sinuses, sinus issues, this kid has a headache once a week, go on record with the nurse, and so when that headache comes on or that stuffy nose comes on, and if this is an ongoing condition, there are some guidance and some leeway. Likewise, and I'll tell you this, our nurses also, they'll have kids who come down to the health office, oh, you know, I, I don't feel so well. Okay, what's wrong? My head hurts. Did you get a full night's sleep last night? Oh, no, I couldn't sleep. Did you have breakfast this morning? No, I didn't have time to practice. Alright, sit here for a moment, let's get you a little bit of food. What a bit of time passes, how do you feel? Oh, I feel much better. Okay, you can go back to class. So, our nurses are doing that, right? And a lot of it is, we also need to communicate with the parents, you know, so that if there's an ongoing issue, let the nurse know. Alright, so it's, so that we're not automatically looking at, okay, here's a menu of symptoms, you have one of them, go home, we'll work with you, we'll work with the students. The other thing that's, oh, the other piece too, is that, and here is another frustration with what's happening around the state. Somebody is sent home to take a PCR test, you get a negative result, you can return. Sometimes the PCR result comes back in 18 hours, sometimes it's four days. Meanwhile, you'll have a child at home waiting. So, that is another piece that we've been pushing with the Department of Health to speed this up, to make it easier for parents to make this turnaround. If somebody comes in, they're very sick, they need to go home, they need to be tested, they need to get a PCR test, they should be able to just go get it and have the results turned around quickly so that, so that we can get that kid back to school when they're feeling better. go get it and have the results turned around quickly so that, so that we can get that kid back to school when they're feeling better. We have had a bit of a delay in getting our own PCR tests. So we're looking at very soon, very shortly, within the next, you know, two weeks or so. We can do a PCR test at school. A kid comes down to the office, multiple symptoms. You know what? Instead of sending home to have the parent then pack the kid up, to then go get a PCR test, we'll be able to, with the parent consent, do a PCR test at school and get it to the lab to have it turned around as quickly as possible. Alright, so that's, that's one of the pieces that we're, we're pretty close to being able to do to help this out and speed up the process. And then the last piece here, close contact. Alright, so right now at NSCS, there are thirty-three students at home because they were close contact of a positive student. This is where the majority of the kids come from the bus. The bus, the bus routes. Middle school, nine, high school, five. So, one of the things to avoid having to quarantine because you're a close contact is that any student who's vaccinated, who is a close contact, does not have to quarantine. So of all of these numbers here, everybody who is currently waiting for a PCR, who is currently a close contact are unvaccinated. Of the fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, or twenty, or whatever, positive cases in the district, only one of them had, had been vaccinated and had a breakthrough infection. Everybody else was unvaccinated. So, you know, and, and, and I realize there's a wide range of opinions around the vaccines, but the, the, the protocols, everything in place, is that if the child is vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine if they're a close contact. Right? So again, it's one of the things that keeps kids in school, it keeps kids playing sports, it keeps these numbers reasonable. Now, I've had a number of requests for distance learning. Right? We're not quite there yet. What we are going to do is ramp up some of the virtual options and supports for students. Now, you know, the, the, the initial ramp up will happen at NSCS because again, NSCS, the students don't have a vaccination option. They are at a different level when it comes to assigning work or packets. You know, we're, we're, we're going to be putting in things to help the NSCS students, some virtual support. Why aren't we doing a full distance learning right now? Because we are totally geared up for in-person instruction. You know, to do what we did last year with hybrid, with people at home, with people in the classroom, it was, it was, it was a very difficult model to sustain. We want the kids in school. Now, if we can get some of the rules changed and limit the amount of students quarantined, and yes, I'll say, vaccination will also keep the kids in the classroom. We think we can get and keep more kids in the classroom and not have to quarantine at home. We don't want to send kids home. The other piece is we're only two, three weeks into school and we're looking at, so are we right now in a spike due to the Labor Day weekend? Because typically, we, there's a holiday, and two to three weeks afterwards, we get a spike in numbers. Next week, will our numbers start dropping? No, is this holiday related? So we're also looking at some of the patterns and the trends. Now, yes, the Delta variant is much more contagious. You know, it may buck any pattern or trend. We are providing direct data to the Department of Health to see if something we can do better, something they can dial back on their own, something that they can improve as far as turning around testing. So all of these questions, distance learning, virtual support, tutoring, transportation, these are all pieces that we're working on, we are incredibly aware of it. I wish some people could see or hear the weekly meetings with the Department of Health because as our nurses experience the frustration from the parents, the DOH is getting the same frustration coming from our nurses and our superintendents as we do everything we can to keep the kids in school. The other thing I'll say, as far as those who are COVID positive, we are getting, and it may be because of not, not having a, a, a virtual or distance learning option, a lot of kids coming in sick. The majority of our cases that were COVID positive, these were students who came to school sick, were sent home to be tested, and they either had a parent at home who was COVID positive and the kid came in sick, or they had siblings and eventually the siblings became positive. So we're not seeing a level of spread within the schools. And maybe it's because of quarantine, you know, maybe it's because of the way we're moving kids around and trying to maintain some social distancing. It really is, it, 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 the main spread is within families. And then that, that of course affects the students who then come into school. So, we're in a good place at the same time, we're trying to be in a better place and make some adjustments. So that's, that's the piece I wanted to cover. Now, I don't know if we want to do it at this stage, but the principals are here to speak on their individual schools or have it at this point and.
Yeah, well, I, I would like to open it up and public comment, and then we can go to the principals after that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Alright, can you get this zoom on? Does anyone want to make any comments tonight? It would be, I don't know if we can answer your questions, but if you want to make a statement, you're more than welcome to. Well, just come up and just talk to the microphone. And if you want to, go ahead, make your statement.
Yeah, I'm Ariana Ramos at Forty Green Street. I do have one son in the high school right now, and just a question. So as I expressed in the last meeting, my concern, you know, with the Department of Health and the quarantining requirements, I expected that this was gonna happen. Now we have over a hundred students that are, you know, medically being quarantined whether or not they're sick. Just want to share that I really feel that we're, we need to give more thought to having distance learning as an option because while the state is trying to figure out protocols and, you know, different variants are coming out, I, I don't see this changing anytime soon. And I think we just need to have a better plan than keeping kids out of school. And I know it's, you know, difficult to do both, but I feel like we're losing a lot more as it is not having that option while we're figuring this out with the state. So that's just my two cents, even at my company, that's what we've decided to do. People don't get sick days anymore because they work from home, they don't get snow days anymore because they work from home. So I don't know, just my two cents, I, I'm very concerned about students losing that much school.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, does anyone have their hand raised or?
There is nobody with a hand raised.
Just click on that chat.
I have it open on this screen over here.
Are you answering that question, or is it somebody who wants to talk or anything?
Well, I don't have chat running, but I have the, I have the participants. Nope, you're right, somebody is on chat. Okay. Why is there a public comment when your agenda said there was no public comment?
So I opened it up for, so we had that. Well, we had the agenda, we wanted to have public comment on. I think we told a number of people that we were gonna have public comment on, and unfortunately it wasn't on the agenda. This committee can open it up briefly for public comment, it'll be closed and then we'll be done. So, does anybody else have any more questions? Okay, I'll close public comment then. Alright, you want to go? You want to go to the principal's superintendent or, I mean, is any, well, let me just try to clear this up. So just for the record, although we are going to congratulate the Nuts Smithfield cheerleading team, they will be here next meeting, although, you know, we do say congratulations, we'll say it again next month, so they are not here. Is there anyone who's here that we could move up on the agenda, superintendent, that doesn't have to be here, you know?
Is, yeah, is the trust here? Yes, can we move up? New business, item A. I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion may be made in your second, second, all in favor? I, all opposed, the ayes have it. We are on a gender item, new bit of six, one, A. Want to come up to the microphone?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name is Colleen Badione, I'm the Director of Operations and Member Services for the Trust. With me tonight is Michelle O'Clair, who's our Member Services Manager. Also Mike Stewart from All One Health EAP and Daphne Valsonor from All One Health EAP. Just a little bit of background before we get into the EAP presentation so that you have in context who the trust is in relationship to the school department. Basically, we provide your property liability, your workers' comp, your health and your dental insurance for your employees and buildings and vehicles and public officials, et cetera. So you have been a longtime member. Through your membership with the trust, we provide many programs and services that you're able to utilize. We provide safety, or we work with you on the safety committee, et cetera. We respond very frequently to requests from our members about programs and services that they're looking for to help them manage their workforce. One of those programs was an employee assistance program. While the trust itself cannot offer an employee assistance program because we do not have the expertise, we did, we did partner with All One Health EAP. And the reason we did that is that we have the confidence that they'll be able to provide you the same level of service and programming that you have come to know through your relationship with the trust. Through this relationship with All One EAP Health or All One Health EAP, we're able to offer very competitive pricing through the economies of scale, similarly to what you're doing through your relationship with other municipalities and school districts in ensuring your municipal, ensuring your school district operations. We've provided through our relationship, or I should say, All One Health EAP has provided to us some trust-wide hours of training that we're able to off, offer to our members. In your packet, you'll find brochures or some flyers on some upcoming sessions that we plan to offer. We do realize, especially with the operations that happen at a school department, that is very difficult to find the correct hours to be able to provide the training for EAP services or any type of work-life balance training. So what has happened is All One Health has actually recorded those programs so that you're able to view those after, or your employees are able to view after, if that is something that they're interested in looking and not able to view the programming live. What we've asked tonight is if we could have All One Health EAP come up and just give you an overview of the program that would be offered to you if you are interested in joining. So with that, I'm gonna ask Mike if you wouldn't mind coming forward.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Included in your packet is a presentation, I will go through this on a very high level, can you hear me okay? Just a real high-level overview of, of the services that we offer. So, you know, our goals as an EAP is to provide really easy access to services. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how employees can access those services. We offer immediate assistance twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three or sixty-five days a year. Anytime anyone needs anything, they can call, we will answer that phone and we will provide help for them. And, you know, we are a resource and we want to provide resources, that's really the focus of our program. Up to the next page. You know, the core benefit is, is mental health counseling, it's available, and, and as we all know now more than ever, you know, there's a mental health crisis going on. There's also a shortage of, you know, a supply and demand issue when it comes to mental health resources. We have a robust network of internal and affiliate providers that can get people appointments very quickly, I like to point that out. But we offer this benefit, a short-term counseling benefit for employees and their household family members. So that's a really, you know, key benefit we see people utilizing. So I won't bore you with all the details on here, but those are some of the things that people will contact us for in relation to mental health counseling. Similar, we offer life coaching benefit, people will contact us, you know, they're, they're going, feeling stagnant in their job, they're feeling stagnant in their life. We have certified life coaches that will provide, similar to the mental health counseling benefit, up to three sessions to kind of help them navigate any life challenges that they are going through. Legal and financial resources, say you're buying a house and you have, you need legal advice, you can call. We will answer the phone, we will set you up with an attorney for a free thirty-minute consultation. You know, so that you can work through that process. If it's something more complicated than that, that needs a few more sessions. On a lot of cases, we will provide those sessions at no cost. And I, and I should have mentioned in the beginning, this is all at no cost to the, to the employee or family member. It's all included in your benefit. So legal, financial resources, you know, we all go through, we bought high houses, we go through challenges in life where we might need legal or financial advice. We have certified counselors that will help people navigate through that process. Personal assistant is a, is a benefit that we offer, we help people get tickets to sporting events. Again, a free service except that you have to pay for the, the tickets and the meal reservations that we will make for you. So we really, you know, part of our philosophy is we try to make people comfortable. So if they call in, if they need, you know, something simple, like we had someone call yesterday for, they want, they bought a house, they needed a quart of wood delivered, and they had no idea how to, how to like source wood, so we were able to line them up with that resource. And, you know, our philosophy is if people call for the simple things and they're used to using the program, that if they have a, you know, a mental health problem, or if they need something more complicated, that they're able to reach out to us and they'll feel comfortable doing that. This last couple services that I'll, that I'll touch upon, medical advocacy. A lot of calls from people, they've gone, you know, they, they sprained their ankle, they've gone to the emergency room. A few months later, they get a bill, they don't know what the bill says, they don't know how much they're responsible to pay. We will help them navigate through. We will help them navigate through that, again, we have people who are trained to do this. Somebody needs a, a referral to, uh, you know, for specialized treatment, we will help them access and make referrals and, uh, coordinate care for people that are looking for medical advocacy. And then, you know, work with life resources, again, similar to personal assistant, we have our own proprietary portal and app. People can download, they can use from a computer, just thousands, tens of thousands of articles, information, uh, soft skill courses that people can, can go through, um, really, you know, understanding that the work-life challenge, particularly in, you know, public school system. We really want to help support the employees and, and make sure that they have, you know, not only access if they happen to go through a crisis, but to help them, you know, manage their, their work-life, uh, challenges. Uh, as I mentioned, broad access. You, you know, we have a website, we have a phone number, we have online chat forums, we really make it as, as simple as possible for people to reach out to us. And, you know, over the years, you know, EAPs were historically an eight-hundred number on, on a, a poster in the lunchroom. We've really tried to break that mold and get away from that, and we really have, uh, you know, multi-level approach for people to reach out when they need help. We got a, uh, an, uh, online form submitted from a gentleman last night at, at twelve, uh, twelve AM. Submitted an online form, we called him back the next morning, and, and helped him navigate through the challenge that he was going through, so. Um, I mentioned the work-life portal and app, you'll have your own specific page. Proprietary, it's kind of, you know, you log in, you identify a username and a password, you'll have a company code, and you would be able to go on there, and that's where you'll find just all the articles, the soft skill courses, there's calculators in there that people use to, if they're buying a car or buying a home. Just a plethora of resources that people can access. Talked about pricing, so on the last page, the, uh, pricing model for, uh, the Trust is ninety P E P M. The P E P M stands for per employee per month. I'm not very good with math, and I'm ashamed to say that in a, uh, public school here, but if you had a hundred employees, that would be ninety, ninety dollars per month? Is that correct? Close enough, so that, that's how you figure it out. Apologize, best time, I really had to talk through a mask, and I apologize for, uh, speaking very quickly. But, um, you know, that's our pricing, we also offer, we love the work that we do. If there's a, uh, a, you know, a situation that happens at school and you need the specific training, you mentioned the, the pool training hours, where we also will come on site for a critical incident, if there was an incident at school, and you needed counselors to come on site to do a debriefing with the staff, those are services that we provide. Substance abuse professional services, if, if there's a, an employee that's going through, or a family member that's going through, uh, substance abuse will help them navigate through that process. And, um, you know, part of the benefit here, so to read from my glasses, uh, you'll get regular utilization reports, so we will provide as much reporting and as much information as you need to understand how the program is working. It is a confidential program, but we'll provide you with aggregate data. Um, you'll have a dedicated account manager, and she is over there, Daphne Valsenor, is working, uh, throughout Rhode Island with our, um, other trust, uh, organizations that we're working with. We, we send a lot of information, supervisor newsletters, uh, and employee newsletters. We really like to spread the word about the services that we offer and provide, so that people can access us for help. We do webinars, uh, that's one of the hallmarks of the, uh, All One Health EAP is we do, you know, we used to do a lot of in-person training. I think so, close to six hundred and fifty trainings per year, we were provided throughout New England. In this day and age, a lot of it we're doing through webinars, but we have, you know, very topical webinars that we, we think will be of value to you. And, um, management consultation, the last thing that I'll talk about. A school system and a principal, we'll, we'll get a call from a principal, I'm having an issue, um, and, and we'd like your assistance, we'd like some guidance, we'd like some consultation. That's a service we provide at no cost, again, um, to, to really try to help, uh, you know, with, uh, with those types of challenging situations that I'm sure you, uh, are often faced with, so. That concludes, uh, my brief presentation, uh, if any questions are, there's a lot of information in the packet there, but I know that it's late and your time is valuable, so I wanted to really just hit the high notes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, have you been, I, is this a new partnership with the Trust, or have you been working with them before on this?
We've been working with them. Yeah. A little bit over a year, so we have, I think, twenty-three, twenty-five? Six thousand employees.
Thank you.
So when you say twenty-five, you're, you're working with twenty-five other school districts? And municipalities, trust clients? Okay.
Yeah, throughout, throughout New England, I will point out, and I should have mentioned this, we do a lot of work with public school systems. We, um, you know, large cities, small towns, we, we really do a lot with public school systems and understand the unique needs of, of public school systems, so, um, that's one of the things that we're, we're proud of the work that we do with, with the schools.
So, um, this is employer paid, right, it's not withheld from somebody's paycheck?
It's usually, it's, it's usually paid by the employer.
I just, I have a question about the additional services, um, training, obviously, I understand, um, what is C I S D?
C I S D stands for Critical Incident Trust Debriefing, so if there was a tragic event that happened, and, you know, teachers wanted, uh, a counselor to come in and do debriefing sessions, we usually will come in for a couple hours, we'll talk in a group, and we'll also stay and be available for, you know, people that want to talk to us individually, and a lot of cases, they'll, they'll give us their information, and we'll set up, you know, grief counseling a- after the fact as well.
Okay, and S A P, I assume is substance?
Substance abuse, uh, professional.
Okay, thank you. And that also would be paid by, like, it says six hundred dollars per case, who pays the six hundred dollars?
The first thing I have to say is that there are some pooled hours, as Mike referenced, and I think I said earlier, um, one of the, of the benefits is that we're offering some of those services to our members as well, that, because we're not going to be able to utilize them all, so we want our members to be able to use them. However, if you are not able to use the service, uh, the service hours, or you have to contract directly with, um, All One Health EAP, then it would be at your cost. From Daphne.
So the other piece as well is that as you're entering into contract, if you would like to purchase some training and C I S D into your contract, you are able to do that so that for each different cases, you're not racking up that six hundred dollars, but anything in addition, all that's.
Okay, and you mentioned your contract, how long with the contract?
Uh, usually the contracts, um, are a year, and then, uh, it, it rolls over as you are deciding to, um, continue with us. And the more members who join, the lower the P E P M is, as well.
Yeah, we started, actually, we started at, I think, a dollar twenty-five. More than that, dollar? Dollar twenty-five, and we're down to ninety cents because of that economies of scale. There is another, before we reach that next, um, tier, there is a significant amount that we do need to add, so right now it would be at the ninety cents. Thank you.
Ever so, so I just want, maybe I'm misunderstanding, so we would purchase, would the purchase be through the trust, or directly, directly to you? I'm to All One.
So how it works is the trust did like a master contract, so basically, you know, because you are a trust member, you're able to sort of utilize the, the program and get this, the pricing, uh, that we've secured on behalf of your, of you. But it would be a direct contract with the EAP service.
Thank you.
Superintendent, how many, uh, employees do we have?
Lisa, have you, you worked out the, uh, simple calculation?
We have about two hundred twenty-five employees, so the annual cost for us, um, a per employee per month basis would be about twenty-five hundred dollars.
For, for year?
For year.
I, I just have a quick question, um, I know there's a lot of these kinds of services out there, right? So, do you offer the district or some of the, um, teachers or something, uh, the ability to sort of test drive it? To see what it feels like, a lot of the, a lot of times, these services actually have sort of a, a demo site, where you can kind of go kick your tires, get a feel for what would happen, how you simulate if you were to use the service yourself?
Um, I think we, I mean, we could share our, our, our sites, um, and our work-life app, I could, I could get you a demo code so that you could test that out, but are you referring to actually testing out the service?
No, no, I'm not meaning the service, I mean, so.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Again, there's a lot of these things out there, so it.
Yeah.
I'm kind of curious, because I think other people might want to be able to see what, what it looks like for them.
Yeah, we can, we can forward you, um, uh, that information, those links to, to our sites. We could also send some links to, uh, well, if you go on our site, you'll be able to link through, um, and look at some of the trainings that we provided, um, and see the catalog of training and the other resources that are available on that site, we're happy to share that.
And I, I would just like to invite you, the Trust, through our relationship has, in your folder, you'll see that there's several upcoming sessions that if there is one that of interest that you'd like to attend, um, you can just let me or Michelle know, um, or Lisa, and we'll make sure that you're registered appropriately, so you can see that, or if you can't make it at that time, we'll get you the recording of it as well, so that you're able to view it. But we welcome you to kind of sit in.
And we'll, we'll get that to you, and, you know, listening a little bit to the conversation before, we have a lot of topical information related to the COVID and, um, you know, the challenges related to that, so, um, still free to browse through and, and use the content.
Yeah. So if we decided on a contract, and then through economies of scale, the per, uh, the per-person cost went down, would the district then enjoy that cost for our current contract? Okay.
Some of our, some of our members that have, um, partnered, um, with All One EAP, they, as we said, when they first joined, they were paying a much higher, and just, you know, every time there was new members that came on board, their bill got lower. Automatically. Mm-hmm. Even the members who joined without the trust, yeah, once they realized that the trust has joined, then the prices became.
So other than, in your cost, let's say that I call and say, um, you know, I have a mental health issue. So I come to see you, you set me up with a psychologist or a counselor, is that correct?
Correct.
And then there's no additional costs? So we, the twenty-four hundred or whatever, twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, so your, your, your benefit is three, three sessions, so it's generally designed to be short-term. However, if it was a more acute or something that was potentially more of a long-term treatment need, what we would do is work to connect you with a, uh, a counselor that takes your insurance. The first three sessions would be paid for by us. And then after that, if you decided to continue with that counselor, you would be able to do it through insurance. And yeah, it's, it's three sessions per issue, so we have people that, you know, something happens in their life in February, they call, we provide the three services, uh, three sessions. November, something else happens, they call for a different issue, we're not going to say, well, we've already used your three, it's three, three sessions per, uh, per card, it's a per issue. I will, I thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a recommendation, or do you want to, uh, talk about it at another session, or?
Well, the, the reason we asked, um, the Trust and, uh, EAP folks here is because we did see a presentation, uh, to, uh, again, it was majority of, um, school districts across the state. And obviously, um, whether we're a school district or municipality or a corporation, we want to support our employees, we want them to have access to, um, counseling, to other information. It, it's basically building a better, happier, uh, workforce. And given the partnership with the Trust, and given the overall cost of this, uh, this was something that, after we had seen the presentation, we thought, oh, yeah, it's something certainly worth, uh, looking into. So, but before we entered into anything, we wanted to have the, the folks here to explain what this is, uh, and what we'd like to do, and I'd be happy, uh, you know, we, as, we get some of the, uh, the links or to kick the tires, uh, to have some of the, the union executive board look at it as well. Um, because this could very well be a positive thing for, um, all, all of our staff.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, the EAP is great, I mean, we can, we can try, I mean, I'd be willing to, you know, upon the union agreement or next meeting, um, looking at it, giving, taking their recommendation, um, and having a report in a year, so you can say, nobody used it, or a lot of people used it, and, you know, I, I think EAP programs are great.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman, President, can I have one question on this? I, I think the presentation is great, and I like the idea, I do think, you know, we should hear from the, uh, teachers' union if they, uh, and the staff, all our staff, if they're interested in this, but my guess is they will be, but again, we'll, we'll hear from them. My only question is, since we are, we would be contracting directly with the company, is this the kind of thing we'd have, can we do that, do we have to bid on this? Do a, you know, a little contract?
So. The annual amount is less than five thousand dollars. Yeah. I would, I would state that it probably doesn't have to be bid, Lisa?
No, it doesn't need to be bid.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So could we check with the teachers, um, during this month and put it on the agenda for, for next month? I think it sounds like a wonderful idea, and, um, I think that the input from the teachers will be, um, important. Um, for sh, it's short money for a great deal.
And, and, you know, the, the, the support staff union, the, uh, the, the, the certified teacher union, I'd like a couple of administrators to take a look at it, um, and basically see what, uh, Lisa, Alicia, or myself saw, uh, when we were first introduced to this.
Great.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent, do you want to go to the principal presentation?
Yeah, if, if we could have, uh, just hear from our three principals about the, uh, start of school and how it went and the challenges, and, you know, because we always start with N S E S, uh, let's start with the high school first, because Mr. McGee is already standing up. And Mr. McGee, I am going to zoom in.
Oh, please, get, get my good side.
Make you look as good as you can.
All right, all is not doom and gloom here. So first of all, it's great to be back five days a week, right, it, we're back in some sort of a routine, so very happy about that. Students and teachers seem to be upbeat and positive for the, for the most part, and I feel very fortunate that we, that we have the staff and students that we do at the high school, there's no other school like it. To start out, we have two new faculty members this year, replacing retired teaching positions. Both are doing extremely well. We have a new Spanish teacher, Mrs. Jennifer Rosen, she's taken over the role as freshman class advisor right out of the gate, just because she wants to get to know the kids a little bit better. So, uh, she's a ball of energy, great to have her, there are a lot of positive comments. We also have a new technology education instructor, Mr. Jeffrey McCary. He's providing that much-needed instruction that we needed for non-college-bound students, but he does have college-bound students as well in his program. He's a licensed contractor, he holds an engineering degree. Already, he's, he's arranged to have college credit at Rhode Island College for classes that he's offering at North Smithfield High School. Students enrolled in the class, will also complete an OSHA training course, which was, they will receive a ten-hour OSHA training certificate. Uh, he's certified to teach career technical education courses and construction, so there's a possibility of opening up another C T E program for which we can tuition in students from other districts to come into our school, if we can get that steps. Right now, they're not having any new, uh, courses right now for C T E programs, but he's had one in the past, and it would be an easy transition if they do open that up again. We're getting into a routine moving forward, getting back to normal as much as possible.
We have fourteen new clubs opening for after school for the wide variety of offerings. Field trips are starting up again. We've already had a local field trip offered free of charge by the North Smithfield Heritage Society to the Blunders Way and Native Burial Grounds. At this point, I'd like to publicly thank and recognize Mr. Richard Keen and Mr. Larry Smith for volunteering their time and order, organizing this activity. They provided a wonderful tour. We're very grateful to have all their hard work and dedication. In an effort to start to be more normalized in school, we are once again starting to plan trips to enhance instruction. So we're planning more field trips. That's something we haven't done in a long time. Kids really look forward to it. So it's a, it's a welcome thing. Our open house went pretty well. We tried an appro- an approach that allowed parents to visit schools without having to follow a schedule. What we've done in the past is they had to follow their child's schedule, go from class to class. Parents that had more than one student at the high school had to pick and choose where they went. This time we set up different areas where the department stayed together. Parents went and to visit each teacher as they, they desired. They, they weren't committed to being there for the full two hours. Uh, it seemed to work out very well. We had a lot of positive comments about that. Building looks great. I received a lot of comments and praising of the cleanliness of the building and how, how well put together it is, particularly during uh, open house. A lot of parents commented about that. So I'd like to recognize and thank our custodial staff, Mrs. Anne DeSimone, Diane Walling, Mary Beth Curzy and Jim Fornia and Carol Fernandez. Those folks are dedicated workers that take great pride in their work and it shows. We're very lucky to have them. We also have a new outdoor greenhouse. It's almost completed. This is a project that started last year as a senior project. Uh, there was trouble getting materials to the site on time as everything got back ordered during the COVID and all that. So uh, Evan Gravel is a graduate uh, student. He, he did that as a senior project. He comes in on weekends and he's slowly getting put together. If you can go back and take a look at it, if you want to see it, it's right on the corner of the uh rear parking lot. And that's going to be used by the uh special ed students as well as our environmental science classes. Also, North Smithfield Garden Club, uh, which is just dissolved, took their remaining funds of three thousand dollars and they donated it just for the specific purpose of buying supplies and so forth for that greenhouse. So that was very nice. We're anxiously, anxiously awaiting our new track and turf field. We're looking forward to some new uh, new, some home games. I believe we are anticipating the field opening probably mid-October sometime, the delayed October. Uh, sports are back on track to some extent. There've been a few little hiccups, but uh, it's good to have, finally have participation back in sports again. I think that's good just mentally to have, have that to look forward to for the kids, right? We've been uh, we have a meeting scheduled Friday to discuss with the student council about how we're going to approach homecoming. Traditionally, we have dances and, and those that, the dance usually is a culmination of all the activities that take place. But because of restrictions and so forth, uh, I've been in communication with a lot of other principals. And it seems to be they're doing some sort of outdoor activities, so we're going to probably follow suit with that. I'll know more about that Friday after I meet with the student council. Uh, I'd also like to acknowledge our, our entire maintenance staff, Mr. Massey, Mr. Lowe, Mr. Matthews, Mr. Simzik and Mr. CP for all the work that they've done at our school with the maintenance. We have a new science room, replacing the fifty-year-old family consumer science room. It's, it's a brand-new lab. Uh, Mr. Bailey Gates has taken that room over and now we have all our science rooms all together. They also redid the business uh room upstairs, room two sixteen where Mrs. Viera is. They completely renovated that room. It, new floors, new ceilings, fresh paint, electrical drops, sinks, everything, all new. We also have a new cardio room located adjacent from the gym, completely renovated, outfitted with treadmills, elliptical machines. The weight room is now downstairs and you get to that by the stair, staircase going down closest to the middle school. And that's accessible for everybody in the school. It, it, we uh took a portion of the boys' gym and we made it into a weight room in the back over there. And all that work is done in-house by our staff. All the while, they, they're maintaining all the grounds and so forth. So on rainy days, they're inside working hard all summer and then on the on the, the nice days, they're outside cleaning up. Everything looks great. So they, I, I, I just owe them a great deal. Thanks. Um, in addition to remodeling, we, we now have common planning time each morning. That allows us time to focus on school district and departmental issues. Uh, we can now spend some time addressing school-related issues outside of the classroom that affect what happens inside the classroom. That's something we haven't had before. So every morning we start out with that from seven-ten to seven forty, uh, seven fifty actually. Um, that's going well. Last week, we worked on refining our formal process for RTI, Response to Intervention. It's a tiered system of supports to assist students in need. We're currently uh picking up an old initiative. Last year that we started called the Vision of the Graduate. In order to maintain our accreditation with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, North Smithfield must draft a formal vision of the graduate. So that's what we're working on right now. It's basically a description of the values, beliefs about learning and characteristics that we hope to instill in every graduate by the time they graduate. Much of this work is already in place and formally recognized in our senior project. So we're really not adding something new. It's just a, a, a new way of kind of looking at it. It's kind of a backwards design process where we state what we want our product to look like, that being the graduate, North Smithfield, and then creating a formal vision for that. The idea is to address, address those targeted characteristics and weave them into the fabric of the courses that we teach in the classroom. From that point, we intend to make school-based decisions with the vision of the graduate in mind. I believe we're blessed to have the best educators in the state. We also have great kids. I constantly let them know how proud I am, the culture that we have at North Smithfield High School. It's common for managers from outside prom venues and such to comment how well behaved and polite the students are. And I just want to share with you one quick story. It happened again at the Rhodes Under Patuxet Senior Prom. The manager of Rhodes Under Patuxet singled me out as principal and made it a point to let me know how polite our students were towards her and their entire staff. I'm very proud of our students. In, in conclusion, I just want to thank you all for the hard work and guidance in assisting us in getting back to the real work of educating our students. I feel very positive about our school and the start of the year and look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lahar. Cut that, cut, cut that and follow. While Mr. Lahar approaches, let's just say hi to Miss Sherri McGann. A justice of honor and a lot of the folks at home uh watching this will be uh very disappointed they're not here in person to see Sherri.
Just, I'm gonna say ditto. And I'm gonna sit down and I'm all done. Um, I do echo everything that Tim said as far as complimenting the staff on the great job they've done. I just want to add the technology people to that list. Adam and his crew have done an amazing job. I mean, starting with COVID and all the Chromebooks going out and the distance learning and the tech issues that we've had and the small crew that they have, so then we keep us all up and running and going. And also Mr. Saint Jean is kind of an honorary member of the tech department, so we should probably thank them as well, but they've done an amazing job. And before I start, I'd also like to just recognize um Ms. Welch for her uh letter reading tonight. I think that was a very difficult thing to do. Um, I think she did herself and her staff proud. Um, I think that's a very brave thing to stand up in front of you folks and to present our letter like that. And it makes me proud to work with her that there's people like that here. So thank you for, for what you did tonight. That was very, very brave. Um, as far as the middle school opening, our opening has been extremely positive. It's been, it's been really good. Our kids have been outstanding. They are happy, they are smiling, they are, for the most part, well-behaved. Um, we've had a few issues and again, thanks to some hard work, the district would have been able to solve them. I don't know if any of you got stuck in the drop-off in the morning, the first week of school, but we did a really nice job of having traffic go all the way down, well past the funeral hall on the first day of school. And there were some people who I'm assuming were not North Smithfield residents who like to yell really loud swear words at us as we were letting kids out of our, out of cars. Uh, we were able to adjust our drop-offs, so we got kids out of the cars much quickly, much more quickly and we have uh not held up traffic in the morning. Our pickup in the afternoon, and again, thank you, Mr. Saint Jean, that's gonna get much worse tomorrow, um, has also been extremely crowded. But thank you to Mr. McGee and the high school. They've allowed us to have our eighth graders get picked up at the high school where they have more traffic flow and more parking. So at the end of the day, when the kids get picked up, our eighth graders just go up the stairs, they get picked up there and we put our younger kids in the cars up here. Um, our staff, um, our PE staff, Mr. Saint Jean, our librarian, have been great working with Officer Cabral, our SRO. If you see our pickup in the afternoon, it looks chaotic, but it's extremely well organized. And we literally get, you know, a hundred kids in the cars and out of the parking lot in probably under ten minutes. So they, they have a great system. The kids are happy, the parents are happy. Um, so our pickup and drop-off has gone well. As Mr. Saint Jean said, we've only had two positive COVID cases. I think two, I wish it was zero, but I'll take two. You know, if you gave me that choice at the beginning of the year, two or take your pick, I would have been happy with two. Um, so we've been COVID fortunate, I guess, to stay here at the middle school where we have not had a lot of cases. Um, lunches have been great. The kids are in the cafeteria, they're all together, they are in lines, they are sitting together with their friends again. We, last year we had them sitting by classes. We're allowed them to mix up a little bit more. We are tracking where they're sitting. Should we have a, should we have a positive case, but the kids are allowed to sit with their friends, which makes the lunchroom a very happy place to be. Um, I've been, we have all of our teachers circulating through lunch duty. And usually it is a duty, it's something that people don't enjoy, but this year I think to see the socialization that hasn't happened in a really long time has been kind of joyous for anybody who's been in the cafeteria to watch those kids. We have been giving our kids as much outside time as possible. Um, they take math breaks throughout the day, they go outside after lunch. Um, I think that's good practice, COVID or no COVID, that the sun is a great learning opportunity and to get as much fresh air and sunlight as you can. So the teachers have enjoyed bringing their kids outside, the kids have enjoyed being out there. Um, I think that's one of those things that, you know, there's a lot of lessons I think that we've learned throughout the pandemic that we want to kind of keep going forward. And I think getting kids moving and getting them outside, not just during PE, but to have them be able to be outside as much as possible, um, is great. We had an open house as well. It was outstanding. Um, you know, I, I know that Mr. Saint Jean was addressing a lot of the issues as far as quarantining and buses and this and that. And like, it's been a struggle for all of us. Like you said, parents expressing frustration and there's, there's a lot of frustration and there's enough frustration, I think, from everybody to go around. Um, but the parents at Open House were really supportive and thankful for all the work they, we have done. Nobody agrees with every decision that has been made. I don't agree with every decision I've made. But everyone has acknowledged that we're all doing the best that we can and that we really just want kids to be in school and kids to have as positive a learning experience as possible. And the parents who were here were, were very supportive in acknowledging the work that our staff has done. So it was nice to, it was nice to hear from them. Um, you know, that they appreciate the efforts. Uh, Mr. McGee brought a common planning time. I think common planning time has been a godsend so far. The conversations that I've been a part of with teachers talking about teaching and learning and teachers working together with teachers they don't normally work with has been outstanding. We have been able to do a lot more work, grades five through eight than we ever have before. It's nice to have our fifth grade math teachers in the same room with our eighth grade math teachers, talking about where they start when they walk in the door, where they go out at the end, at the end when they leave. Traditionally, we've done a lot more grade level or, or content-specific, so we haven't had those bigger group meetings where we've had everyone together. Uh, Claire was at the one that we had today. It was, again, we tried to get them out early so they're not leaving for class and we talked up until the bell rang and everybody had to scramble. Um, so the teachers have really embraced the concept and I think are doing a wonderful job with it. It also makes me happy that when I'm walking through the building, I see a lot more teachers going to each other's rooms and just sitting down and talking about stuff that came up at those meetings and say, hey, did you try that yet? I'm doing it to you. So it's spurned a lot more communication outside of just those meetings. So it's early, um, we've only been doing it for a couple of weeks. But so far, I would say the bang for our buck on that has been excellent. So thank you for allowing the teachers that time. I think that they are utilizing it. I do think that they are enjoying it. The one hiccup, I would say, that we've had at the middle school to start the year and the one challenge that we're still struggling with is a phrase that I'm sure you're not familiar with. It's called a devious lick. It's where kids break stuff, steal stuff and then put it on TikTok. So we have not been able to keep soap in our bathrooms. The kids are stealing the soap bag, they're putting it in the toilet, they're hiding them, they're chucking them. So every couple of hours I get a call, there's no soap in this bathroom, there's no soap in that bathroom. Um, and the kid, we've caught a lot of kids, but they are still a little, but there's still some that are more devious than others and still kind of getting away with it. Um, we actually, and I'm happy to say this in public, and if any kids are watching, Mr. Saint Jean, our librarian, came up with a brilliant idea today based on something that I think we've all heard as children. He's taking the the ink from the library stamp thing and putting it on the top of the bag. So if a kid reaches in and takes the bag out, he's gonna have ink all over his fingers just like. And they're gonna literally get, and it's red. They're gonna literally get caught red-handed. Like, he was in our back, he was pink fingers today. He was trying to like wash it off and he couldn't get it all off. Um, so kids, if you're watching, we are gonna get you. So that's our plan starting tomorrow. We've also put in some structures with our people who are on Hallview as far as, you know, asking kids when they come out, is everything in place? So that way we can kind of narrow down when something may have happened, should something go missing. But, I mean, again, it could be worse. It's soap, it's, it is vandalism, it is terrible, but I mean, after what these kids have been through, if a little soap destruction is the worst thing that happened this year, again, I'll sign up for that and take it and call it a win. So we will put a stop to it, but it does kind of warm my heart a little bit to see them having a little bit of mischievous fun, even though it's at our expense. So we do want to stop it, but it does show that they are trying to get the soap back to normal. Um, yeah, everything's been positive tomorrow and we've had a really good opening. Thank you to you folks. Thank you to everyone here and thanks for letting me follow Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Dana.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, um, I'm not sure if you remember one year ago when we did this, uh, we were the ones that were like, everything's so great at our school, everything's fantastic. Unfortunately, things are a little bit heavier at NSCS right now. We do have the unvaccinated population, which we were anticipating walking into this school year. Fortunately, a lot of the systems and structures we had put in place last year have helped us considerably this year. But as Mr. Saint Jean referred to, cases at NSCS are rising. But we're not gonna focus on that. We really want to share all of the wonderful things that are happening at NSCS.
And our littles are super happy as they always are. So, um, we have a new high-quality math program, Eureka, which we're implementing um, in grades K through four, and we have the opportunity to work with the middle base camp. So we're getting professional development regularly. With that, we're very excited.
We're continuing to deepen our knowledge of Ready Gen, our high-quality reading program, which is an integrated and well-balanced approach to reading and writing instruction.
And we too are thrilled about common planning time. So thank you for that. Um, it's a great opportunity for our teachers to work together daily to deepen the knowledge of the standards, explore high-impact strategies, analyze data and strategize um, ways to improve student achievement, looking at student work and we're working and uh, we're collaborating regularly with all of our service providers. So definitely um taking advantage of that time we have to gather.
And I know this may seem um small considering middle and high school, but all of our classrooms have received their own reset bag and they're all color-coordinated. So all of our classrooms have received a bag of equipment that is developmentally and age-appropriate and it's all color-coded. So when we find a purple ball, we know it belongs to kindergarten, which I know may seem silly, but if you've ever been to our lost and found, it's actually a really big deal.
We're also very proud to say that the NSCS food pantry is up and running thanks to our social services department and they work throughout the summer to ensure that everyone has what they.
So part of that, our social services department alongside our teachers, uh, we deliver approximately twelve food baskets to families in our school community that we've identified once a month or once every other month. Um, every so often, we do a collection of funds from our teachers and we use that money to help us purchase uh perishable food. Um, the items that we have in our food pantry are items that aren't typically found at regular food cantries. They're uh items that are hard to come by like soap and shampoo and conditioner and those things. So this is actually um a really exciting thing and it's actually something that our, our, we're finding our community very much in need of.
Um, some exciting news on the, our preschool front. Our preschool teachers have joined forces for their morning session. So that collaboration. So that collaboration is allowing for our smallest learners big opportunities to interact with a variety of peers and grow together socially, emotionally, and academically.
In kindergarten, we added a new kindergarten classroom, which allowed us to have smaller class sizes and more individualized attention and instruction. Piggybacking on that, we also did a bunch of onboarding activities for our kinders throughout the summer. So we did pops with the principals, puddle jumping with the principals, and then we did a getting-to-know K camp, and this is the first year. So our students, over a four-day period, had an opportunity to spend one day in kindergarten. Mr. E was the teacher. Mrs. Salvatore and I were the assistants. And we are excited to say that we had eighty-four of our about hundred-and-two or a hundred-six families participate, which is tremendous.
I thought you were going to say you were excited to say that upon going back to the kindergarten classroom.
Yeah. When we opened that sixth classroom, we tried to figure out how we could do administration slash kindergarten at the same time.
We're also very excited to announce that Grade One now has instructional assistance for the first time ever.
Last year, we added a Grade Two classroom, initially to help us decrease our class numbers due to social distancing. It was staffed with two reading interventionists. We recognize the huge benefit in this in that our students in Grade Two made substantial gains and have continued those gains into their third-grade year. As a result, we decided to maintain that program, so we still have six Grade Two classes, which allows for smaller class sizes of press Grade Two. And in that classroom, it's staffed with a reading interventionist and a elementary school teacher. And they are working on reading strategies and reading skills to also help lift our kids. Those kids are some of our most significantly impacted because they have not had a typical year yet of schooling.
We're thrilled to share that we have opened a second language-based classroom at NSCS for our older students. This room allows for each child to learn at his or her own pace with the support they need. And they're located in the orange wing among their peers, which makes integration seamless.
Our Grade Four team has undergone a major change. We welcomed two new members this year. Ms. Conti, who was from the middle school, and Mrs. Albrom, who was actually one of our building-based subs from last year. They've been a wonderful addition to our fantastic fourth-grade team. And speaking really quickly to our building-based subs that we've been allowed to get over the past two years, they're allowed to come in for four days, and we use them however we want. And Rachel and I have decided to kind of make it an elementary-certified position. So when they join us, it's almost a year-long interview process. And we actually hired two of our building-based subs this past year to fill open positions. Because we get to see them. We get to know them. We get to see how they work with our kids.
Our office staff is now firmly established and top-notch. Whether it's over the phone or in person, they're ready with a smile, a kind word, and a helpful approach. And we're excited that they are the faces of NSCS.
We obviously would be remiss without mentioning Mrs. O'Neill. If any of you have come across her, you probably didn't see her because she's constantly flitting back and forth, back and forth. Over the past two years, NSCS would look very different. She is nonstop during school hours, after hours, and over weekends. We're so lucky to have her to keep our community safe. We've actually contact traced every single weekend this past, since the onset of the school year.
We're very excited that our specials are now taking place in their classrooms, so we get to hear music. This is recollection coming from the hall each and every morning, and we just love seeing our students and hearing them across all those areas.
So really quickly, just some keepers from last year that we've continued with arrival and dismissal procedures, thanks to Mr. St. Jean, which will increase, which is fine. It is honestly mine and Rachel's favorite time of the day. We are outside at eight-thirty every morning, and at two-fifty every afternoon, we take kids out of the cars. We get to know all of our families, and we also get to put our kiddos into the cars. And our parents are absolutely wonderful with a smile and a lot of grace and patience as we go through this.
We're getting faster, though.
We are getting faster.
We're also keeping recesses the way they were last year, which allows our students to experience a variety of play areas. We have that whole beautiful campus, and we are utilizing every bit of it, so.
Yep. Breakfast and lunch remain still are free to all of our students. So we switched it up a little bit this year where we now have breakfast on the go. When our kinders, first graders walk into the purple doors, there's a cart set up that they grab their breakfast, and they go. In the cafeteria, our grades two, three, and four students, since they're more independent, are able to go in and do their breakfast and kind of take it on the go.
And although we are still wearing masks, our children, our students are so happy. I mean, so are us. Get to enjoy them, but we see the smiles behind the masks. They're resilient. They're happy, and we're just so excited to be with them every day.
Yep. So tomorrow and on Thursday, we actually have our back-to-school batches, which we're supposed to be held in person. And as a result of the very significant uptick in cases, we are switching to virtual. So those will be occurring tomorrow and Thursday. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I just may, just ask a general question. I know that we have some S of funds that have been approved. If any of the principals, obviously through the superintendent, see a need for additional mental health counselors, anything in that area, please raise that argument through the screen and let us know, please. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, let's keep moving along. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the consent agenda, item number two.
Mr. Shay, can I just accuse item seven? I don't know if I have a conflict, but I have, yeah, do some looking at the legislator who owns the organization.
Just to be clear, let's take seven off. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda absent item number seven.
No move.
Motion to be made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven, approval of kids' club lease agreement.
I will accuse them.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to be made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number four is for informational purposes only. Does anybody have any questions in regards to section four?
I just would like to call out Mr. Allard and Mr. Matthew, both on our facilities, maintenance department. They're retiring after many years of service with us, and we wish them incredible, good fortune, good luck. I have to say that at least one of them, I was willing or trying to cut a deal to not retire, but myself and Mr. CP failed terribly. And so, yes, but despite the hard feelings, enjoy retirement. You deserve it. For item, section number two, doing number two. We must unfortunately remove Ms. Jean Mayo from the school improvement team for NSCS.
So we're not going to approve that?
You know what? Approve it. I don't care. She should be there. I don't think she has a choice. So I just want to make an update that we will be removing Ms. Jean Mayo from the NSCS sixteen.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, moving on to old business. Is there anything having to do with the fiscal year twenty-one operating on capital budget?
Yeah, we're working with the auditors. Everything's going well so far.
Great, thank you. How about the fiscal year twenty-two operating capital budget? Thank you. The next item is A, B, and C, the kindergarten teacher, instructional IA kindergarten in a half clerk district-wide. That's something that needs to be added, Superintendent, or are you just notifying us?
We are adding these positions.
Okay. You need an approval?
We've already done it.
Approval after the fact?
We've had to, so.
Nobody's being critical.
All right.
So do you want us to make a motion to approve this, or is it?
Yes, please.
I'll entertain a motion to add to the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget, one kindergarten teacher, a half of instructional, a half of. One half instructional IA kindergarten, one half clerk that dash district-wide. Motion to be made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to new business, item number two, discussion vote or other action. North Smithfield Public Schools Employee Handbook, two thousand twenty-one.
The main thing I want to say about that is that we have lacked an employee handbook. So this is something that we had started working on pre-COVID. Then COVID happened. We finished it up this summer. We review it. Let me explain what the employee handbook is. It is, it's that missing piece that between the collective bargaining agreements and contract and school committee policy. There's a whole range of things in between, procedures, information that we needed to define, that sit between those areas. And so we did meet with the leadership of both unions to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we're not conflicting with the bargaining agreements. And this document that we put together is basically an employment guide for North Smithfield.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Very well done.
Thank you.
Do you need us to accept it?
If you would, yes.
So the motion to accept the NSPS employee handbook for two thousand and twenty-one as presented?
Please.
Motion to be made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
We can check with council. We will, and we have talked about it, is that periodically we may add to it as things come up. I don't know. I don't know if this is something that has to be approved every year or we have the approval that there is an employee handbook. Periodically, we will review and update, but we will always do it in conjunction with, you know, unions, administration, so that we're all on the same page. But no, I don't know the answer offhand if we have to submit it every year. I will, yes.
There's, Fatima, there's a motion and a second, right? Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to return. Motion to be made. Is there a second? Seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.